We're ready to go. Thank you all for coming. I'd like to call the February 21st, 2019 meeting of the Franklin City School Board to order. And again, thank you all for coming. Do we have a motion from our closed session?
Whereas the Franklin City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Franklin City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Dr. Hall-Lenard. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion for certification signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carries. Do we have any motions from our closed session? I believe there's a personnel motion. Do we have a motion to approve the personnel agenda as presented?
I move to approve the personnel agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I will abstain from line 20 of that.
Thank you, Ms. Jester. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. And we have one abstention. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Good evening.
My name is Josh Johnson, and I got three points, and I'm one of the first two to get the hundred winners. He's the first. And I'm going to go to the podium just.
Congratulations.
And do you please go ahead and say please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. A roll call, Ms. Moore.
Rebecca Jester.
Present.
Amy Phillips.
Present.
Dr. Andrea Hollander.
Present.
Michelle Williams.
Present.
Jessica Grant. Robert Holt.
Present.
Carrie Johnson.
Present.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve or amend our agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of the agenda with amending it by adding a special presentation.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carries. Tammy Moore, would you join Dr. Hall-Lenard down at the podium, please? I have a resolution from the Governor's office, and it says as follows: By virtue of the authority vested by the common Constitution of Virginia and the Governor of the Commonwealth of Virginia, there is hereby officially recognized School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. Whereas school board clerks throughout the Commonwealth are appointed by law to fulfill their duties and responsibilities, and whereas the school board clerks are responsible for keeping accurate records of the meetings and proceedings of the local school board, a record of all receipts and dispersments, and a record of all official acts, and whereas school board clerks perform other duties in connection with the school business of his or her locality as may be required by the school board, and whereas the school board clerks maintain frequent contact with the public, including parents, employees, and the media on behalf of the school board and superintendent, and whereas school board clerks and the performance of their duties are often required to work extra hours attending school board meetings, and whereas school board clerks provide an invaluable service for school board members and superintendents and help ensure that students achieve their highest potential. We're getting to the end. Therefore, I, Ralph S. Northam, do hereby recognize February 18 through 22, 2019, as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week in our Commonwealth of Virginia, and call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. Congratulations. I can't tell you how valuable Tammy is to our board and our school division. She's phenomenal. We get emails from her seven days a week, day and night, so thank you, Tammy. I believe we're going to have a presentation on the budget. Oh, I think, yeah, we'll do the budget, and then we'll do citizens' time. Ms. Sterling.
Thank you, Chairman Holt. We'll have the Franklin City Public Schools 2019-2020 Budget Presentation Public Hearing. Next slide. Budget priorities for the 2019-2020 school year are as followed. Teacher raises, funded SOQ's instructional positions include teachers, school counselors, librarians, instructional aides, principal, and principals and assistant principal positions funded through the SOQ staffing standards for each school division in the biennium. Other contracted staff member pay raises, school psychologists for $60,000, the Early College Initiative, $75,000, an increase in salaries of cafeteria managers, increase of salaries of the board members, and health insurance benefit increase. The trend for the second quarter of the 2018-19 was 9.9%, but we cannot, that cannot be relied on at this time because we have not received our definite numbers. We also have the local choice penalty that has to be paid by moving to Anthem. The compensation supplement based on the Governor's House/Senate proposed amendments. The Governor's amended budget increased the state share of the compensation supplement for the funded SOQ's instructional and support personnel in fiscal 2020, Chapter 2, from 3.0% to 5.0%. The compensation supplement has an effective date of July 1st, 2019, and provides the state share of 5.0% compensation supplement for funded SOQ's instructional positions and support personnel, academic year, governor's school, and regional alternative education programs. At this time in the Senate, same as the Governor's introduced budget, the Senate also provides flexible language that provides partial state funding for school divisions that provide more than an average of 3.0% increase during the 18-2020 biennium, but less than an average of 5.0% increase. School divisions must provide at least 3.0% increase over the biennium to be eligible for a 3.0% payment. This action does not change projected state funding in fiscal year 2020 for the program. And before I move on, I want our community and the board to know that the 3.0% is just a one-time payment. After that, we would have to find in our budget the additional portion that was given to us from the state. And the House proposes to return to the original compensation supplement in Chapter 2, which includes a July 1st, 2019 effective date for a 3.0% compensation supplement. The House also proposes an additional 2.0% compensation supplement for SOQ-funded instructional and support positions effective January 2020. Only a maximum of 3.0% salary increase provided by local school divisions in fiscal year 2019 will be credited towards eligibility to receive the 5.0% compensation supplement. With the information provided, we provided our school division and community with a budget survey, and I would like to read the results. The budget survey for fiscal year 2019-2020. What should be the board's highest priority in the upcoming year 2019-2020 budget? Select your top three. The community responded. The top three answers are teacher raises at 68.97%, academic classes and elective classes at 45.45%, and discipline at 12.50%. Based on your interactions with Franklin City Public Schools, what is your overall impression of the strengths of the division? Rank them in order from 1 to 12, 1 being the greatest strength and 12 being the least. First was academic classes, elective classes at 38.71%, sports programs, professional development were the top three. From your perspective, what are the challenges facing the school division? Rank them in order from 1 to 3. For this survey, we condensed it and took the top three. The challenges are teacher raises at 50%, discipline is a challenge at 21.21%, and maintenance of schools at 9.3%. And last but not least, we added a fourth, which is attendance, at 9.3%. What areas do you feel need continued or additional support? Select your top three. Teacher raises at 62.96%, academic classes and elective classes at 33.3%, and maintenance of schools need continued support. Please rate the importance of following, please rate the importance of the following on a scale of 1 through 5, 1 being not at all important and 5 being extremely important. So from 5 to 1, professional development for teachers and non-teachers at 34.38%, programming options to meet the needs of all students as our master schedule at 15.63%, the arts, music, arts, and performing arts at 16.3%, and that was extremely interesting. Please describe your relationship to the Franklin City School Division. Staff members, 75% took the survey. Parent guardians, 15.63% took the survey. Community members, 9.38% took the survey. And that concludes the responses from our community, and the floor should be.
Thank you, Ms. Sterling. Now we'd like to open the public hearing portion of this meeting, and it's your chance to comment on the budget while we're deliberating options. So I would like to invite anyone who'd like to comment to come forward to the microphone, state your name, and perhaps your role, but now is your chance. See no one standing or even attempting to come up, so we'll ask one more time. Anyone like to come forward and comment? If not, we'll close the public hearing section on our budget and move to citizens' time. We have one person signed up for citizens' time, and I'd like to ask him to come forward, Mr. William J. Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Thank you, school board. I did have some questions about that, but I wanted to address them here, so that I didn't stand up because of that. Hope that's okay. With the budget time coming up, and it looks like raises and everything, what I have a question about is, what about your janitors, bus drivers, and aides and substitute aides? I don't see anything mentioned about that. Isla White last year did a complete review from the bottom to the top, okay? And they included all those people. They didn't leave out people. When is the last time they had a raise? Okay? I do know that after the last superintendent came and they had to cut money, they went down to the substitute teachers, long-term subs, and they cut their rates. And they need to find out until they get, they got the first paychecks. So I would ask that maybe you address that issue also. What about them? Nobody ever talks about them. And I can believe, I can believe me when I tell you this, the schools won't run without them, okay? You could form a committee, have school board, person, city council, teacher, a parent, but maybe it's time we look from time, bottom to top like Isla White did. They're attracting top-quality people in a top-quality school, and we need to keep up with them. So I would make the recommendation to maybe form a committee, but I would like to also you look at the janitors and aides before you, you know, determine your budget. Now, you might say, where are we going to get the money from the, to do this? Okay? We were told, and we've asked over the last five years, we finally got an answer last year. We have over 200 kids going elsewhere, Southampton, Southampton Academy, Rock Church, homeschooling. I was told we get reimbursed over $12,000 per child. You do the math. That's over $2 million. That's going elsewhere. They should be coming here, okay? What is the figure for this year? I asked, and nobody seems to know. Why? It's February, going on March. Ask the figure. Get an answer. Let us know. Again, so how much money we're losing. But you should have that figure right now. There shouldn't be any excuse of, I don't know if the figure went up or went down. And I also talked to parents who pulled their kids out. Nobody's ever asked them why. You know, I look up here, and it gives reasons. To me, especially if you're in the schools, in the classrooms, in the kids, you'll see the number-one reason we have, and it's discipline in classrooms. We need help. Where are the subs? The subs have disappeared in the schools. Did you know that? Tutors. They pulled the tutors out. Did you know that? We need help. We need, we desperately need help, especially with SOLs coming up. And the parents see this, and that's why they're pulling the kids out. Get a report. How many, a breakdown of the kids that have left of all those 200. Get a breakdown. See for yourself, okay? This survey looks good, but I'm not sure how many people took the survey, and did it really ask the right questions to the right people, okay? But I think it's a good beginning. Don't get me wrong. I like, I knew Supernano, I really don't know her very well. I thank the world to Mr. Edwards, he's a fine gentleman. I think they're headed in the right direction. But Ms. Johnson, I think you taught in the school systems, okay? Twice, if I'm not mistaken. You could tell them what's going on. I mean, and that's going to lead to something else in a second, but I do want to remind you one thing when I talk about discipline. Remember what I'm saying? Before Mr. Phelps came back into high school, what was the problem that he came back all of a sudden after Christmas? When 20 to 25 teachers left SP Morton the year before last, did anybody ask any questions? Did y'all ask questions? Did parents ask questions? No. And then it was pretty obvious what happened last year, but you need to get more involved, and I'm, I'm going to bring that up in a second, okay? And we also, what about an alternative school? Southampton has one, half of it is in the city of Franklin, I believe. Our new city manager is very familiar with the people over in Southampton. How about approaching her, about approaching them? Why can't we share some services with them about a real alternative school? We've got her in there as our new city manager. Take advantage of it. Have you thought about that? Okay? The next thing I was going to say is, I think it should be mandatory, one day in the fall and one day in the springtime, that each and every one of you spend a full day in the schools, from the bus duty at the beginning, bus duty at the end. How can you know what's going on in the schools if you've never been in the schools? Some of you, I'm not even sure that have spent a full day in the schools. Come, spend days in the schools. See what the teachers go through. Look at the classrooms, but I think it should be mandatory. The Secretary of Education was asked this question. One of the senators on the committee said, I take one day a month, and I go back home, and I spend a day in the schools to see what's in the schools. He challenged her and her staff to spend one day in the schools each month, and they accepted. And I don't see why you shouldn't be able to spend a day in the schools and see what's going on. You volunteered to help us, but how can you help something you've never been there to see? Now.
Joey, you have about 30 seconds.
Thank you. I'm almost finished. I'm going to tell my city council member, if you want to run for reelection, if anybody wants to be on the school board, a question is, will you spend a day in the schools? If the answer is no, then they'll say, thank you very much, see you later, okay? You should spend a day in the school if you're going to be on the school board. Okay, finally, I administrate in one of our schools has told their kids, no longer will usual environment as an excuse for your life short changes. It's the choices you make, and you can be anything you want to be, and I think that is fantastic. Choices, choices, choices for our kids. And I also give you same challenge for y'all. It's choices that you can make in the school system. Thank you. Bye-bye.
I'll shut this off in a minute. Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Let's move to item 3-1, Approval of Minutes. We have several. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes for our work session on January 10th?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the school board work session meeting minutes dated January 10th, 2019.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes for January 10th signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Any abstentions?
I abstain.
I abstain.
We have two abstentions. Motion carries. Now, January 24th, our regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes from our regular school board meeting on January 24th, 2019.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Report of the superintendent, Ms. Sterling.
Excellent, thank you. We'll start the report of the superintendent with good news, and that'll be led by Ms. Kell And our school board members.
Good evening, board members, Ms. Sterling, and Franklin community. It's my pleasure tonight to present some awards. Some of them are awards we present monthly and some every nine weeks, and I'd like to ask the school board members to come down and help me. I think Ms. Phillips is going to come down and help with the student attendance award. The school with the best student attendance for the second nine weeks of school is J.P. King, 97.56%. Now, Ms. Williams, if you'll come down and help present the staff attendance award. Our best teacher attendance award for the second nine weeks of school goes to Franklin High School, 94.96%. Ms. Harris Mohammed, our instructional specialist for Franklin High School, is here to accept And now, if Ms. Jester will come down and... No, 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 no. We're going to do perfect attendance of our employees who have had absolute perfect attendance for the second nine weeks of school. That's 45 days, second nine weeks of school. So I'll be calling out their names, and Ms. Jester, if you will present those, okay? Hold on. Okay, from Franklin High School, Ms. Tawana Bernard. Ms. Levita Britt. Ms. Sandra Bryant. Mr. Travis Phelps. Ms. Shonda Harris Mohammed. Ms. Carolyn Hurdle. Ms. Veronica Knight. Mr. Patrick Leslie. Ms. Charlene Logan-Britt. Mr. John Love. Ms. Mona Murphy. Mr. Terrence Randall. Ms. Olin Turner. And last but not least, Mr. Brandon Yan. Congratulations, Franklin High School, for such a large number of perfect attendance for second nine weeks. From J.P. King Middle School, Ms. Oris Lane. And Ms. Triva Lee. From SP Morton Elementary School, Ms. Joyce Carter. Ms. Melinda Dawson. Ms. Rebecca Gary. Mr. Calvin Singh. Mr. Clinton Smith. And Ms. Lizzie Teague. From our transportation department, Ms. Loretta Bradshaw. Ms. Frederica Porter. Ms. Marcy Smith. And Ms. Darlene Sanford. From our cafeteria department, Ms. Marcia Parker, Franklin High School. Ms. Alice Hunt, J.P. King Middle School. And from our school board office, Ms. Tamara Sterling. Ms. Felicia Burkhalter. Ms. Norletta Edmund, who just stepped out. And Ms. Juanita Vick. Thank you, Ms. Jester. And thank you, congratulations to all of you who have had perfect attendance. Now, Mr. Edwards, if you will assist in, um, presenting the Bronco Pride Clean School Award. This month, it goes to J.P. King Junior Middle School. And Ms. Yvonne Everett is part of that staff too. But congratulations, J.P. King, Mr. Parker and your staff. Congratulations. And last but not least, Dr. Hall Leonard, if you would come down and assist with presenting the excellence award. I'll give this to you. And tonight, I'd like to call Mr. Kelvin Edwards forward. Congratulations, Mr. Edwards. You received the award of excellence for the month of February. And I would like to read what was written about you, okay? Because we can take nominations from our staff, from parents, from community, because it's on our website. And I thought this was very moving, so I'd like to read this and share it with you. Yes. "I'm writing this letter to recognize one of your employees for how he went above and out of his way to assist and help me on January the twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. I was in the lobby area on the first floor of the transportation office. I've been looking for work for the last four months. I know I was looking lost as I don't know what getting ready to turn around and walk when here comes Mr. Edwards around the corner with that bright smile on his face, outstretched arm to shake my hand, and that energetic voice. He says, 'Hello, how can I help you?' I had to really look around to see if it was me that he was talking to. He continued on to make sure I had been properly helped in every way he could. Even though I didn't get to talk to him for the remainder of the day, Monday evening sometime after six P.M., I saw a Franklin number come up on my phone. I said to myself, 'This young man better not be calling me when he needs to be at home with his feet under the table looking at his own family.' Sure enough, it was Mr. Edwards. Well, if you know me, I got on him, but at the same time, he really made me feel some kind of special, that he was calling me to let me know that I didn't need an I.D. card to be a substitute car driver and that all my paperwork was in order. I just wanted to let you know that it is employees and staff like Mr. Edwards that makes the light shine on Franklin City Public Schools and its entire staff. An employee's workday usually begins at home. They sacrifice so much to leave their family, travel the dangerous highway, and then come to work with the positive energy like that of Mr. Edwards, and to carry it on throughout the workday and then overtime and to the general public. This just goes to show the expectations that Ms. Sterling puts out there for the staff to relate to the general public. For this, I say thank you, Mr. Edwards. Congratulations."
Oh, wow. What a wonderful note, what a wonderful note. Congratulations. Um, next we'll move on to our student liaison report. Ms. Grace?
The first en- the first semester ended on January thirtieth, thirtieth, and the second semester began on February first. SOL testing for the first semester has been completed, as well as the industry certification testing for the first semester. Guidance has already started scheduling students' classes for the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty school year at Franklin High School. Guidance has also been working on college and scholarship applications for seniors, as well as graduation preparations. Safety drills for the second semester have been completed. This includes two fire drills and two lockdown drills. The robotics team has completed its building portion of the season and will be competing on the second and third of February at Deep Run High School. The scholastic bowl team is in the state final and will be competing at the College of William and Mary this Saturday at ten A.M. The wrestling team finished fifth in the state, which is the highest rank that Franklin High School has ever held for this sport. Representing the wrestling team tonight are DeShawn Butts and Josh Johnson. DeShawn Butts and Josh Johnson both have accomplished one hundred pins in their wrestling career and will each have a plaque in the Franklin High School trophy case, leaving their mark to forever inspire those after them. The girls basketball season is over, and they won their game in the regional tournament. They have showed a lot of improvement for this year. The boys basketball team is in the regional tournament tonight. Mr. Felts and Mr. Lees are attending to support Franklin High School's athletes. The Special Olympics are also known as the Tribe Rivers District League, was hosted at the high school today. The athletes did well, and the senior class attended to support and encourage them. The report for J.P. King Middle School, the mid-year benchmarks and the civics and economics and science SOLs have been completed. The February- on this February twenty-third will be the first Saturday Academy. It will be solely focused on writing. Writing will continue to be the focus of the SOLs for the next month. Events and upcoming events, the first Chromebook workshop was February sixth, and they were able to provide sixty-seven students with Chromebooks to take home. Another workshop is going to be held Thursday, February twenty-eighth. The Virginia Opera, the Virginia Opera performed on February seventh. They performed an opera featuring the life of a famous tenor and composer, Roland Hayes. February thirteenth was the monthly Parents as Partners, and there was a Title I presentation and a student-led Black History Program. February fifteenth, the students shared their Blacks History Program with the rest of the students in the gym. There was also a program sponsored by Franklin Parks and Recreation and Franklin Public Library. The report for S.P. Morton Elementary School, on Monday, the teachers received professional develop- development in the areas of small group instruction and making sure lessons are aligned to the curriculum. The students have completed the M.A.P.S. testing today and are looking forward to Dr. Seuss Week. February eighth was the Sweetheart Dance. There were over three hundred students and parents who attended this event. The students who attended had a great time and were all dressed nicely. February thirteenth, they held their annual muffins-for-mom breakfast. Every seat was filled in the cafeteria, and the administration reviewed the importance of attendance and punctuality with the students. Ms. Thornton gave a rep- a presentation to help moms assist their children in finding the right level book for them to read at home. Each student also received a book to keep for themselves. On Valentine's Day, the students were served their food in the cafeteria in a more family-styled fashion, which they enjoyed very much. The caf- the cafeteria staff did a wonderful job decorating and preparing for this lunch. They also did that in the high school, and I enjoyed it a lot, just saying. Yeah.
I see our wrestling coaches in the audience. Bo, would you stand up and receive applause, please? Thank you. Fifth in the state, not bad, not bad.
We're gonna move on to human resources, and that will be led by Ms. Gail Wade.
At the last board meeting, you had been reviewing a school calendar. Um, I wanted to inform you that since our last work session, that new legislation has been passed in Virginia that allows school divisions to begin school up to fourteen days or two weeks prior to Labor Day. So it's no longer a requirement to start school the day after Labor Day. Um, in light of that new legislation, Ms. Sterling would like for us to, um, come together, principals, teachers, community, parents, and just review that and make sure, you know, just discuss our options and see if we do want to keep our traditional calendar, or if we would like to explore maybe starting, uh, a week or two before Labor Day and how that would impact our calendar. Just, you know, kinda take a look at the pros and cons. We already have a calendar committee meeting scheduled for next Thursday, and we'll begin looking at that, so, um, we just wanna put the calendar on hold now before asking the board to approve one. Okay? Our timeline would be to, um, have a draft calendar at our April work session to present to you. Um, next, I wanted to announce that, um, on February the eighteenth, which was Monday of this week, we held a retirement seminar. It was sponsored or presented by the Virginia Retirement System. Um, it was entitled, "Are You Ready to Retire?", and it was geared to people who are within five years of considering retirement. Um, it covered a wide array of topics, and I think, um, our attendees were very, um, well-informed and excited about the information they received. We had about twenty-five, twenty-six people, um, there, and, um, from all across the division, and it was, um, it was a very good session. So I wanted to let you all know, next month, we will be having one that will come in and speak to our staff about 401Ks and 403Bs, et cetera. Okay?
All right. Thank you so much. Next, we'll have the Division Financial Report. I received the Division Financial Report from the Director, Ms. Pamela Kindred. Unfortunately, she's unable to be with us tonight because she's under the weather, but I will present her report. First, she submitted the budget comparison that the board receives monthly for your review. Next, you have a memorandum from Ms. Kindred to me about a budget amendment transfer. And it says, "This budget amendment is being submitted to request a transfer of funding from instruction to technology." Of one hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, and I'm willing to go ahead on and give that explanation.
Let's go ahead and vote on that. Uh, do we have a motion to approve that transfer?
Excuse me, Chairman Hope, and I believe she was gonna give an explanation before we vote.
Okay. You can do it in the discussion, but go ahead.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
The request to move one hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars from instruction to technology is to cover previously approved capital outlay expenditures for J.P. King Junior Middle School and S.P. Morton Elementary School. Carryover funds were, uh, carryover funds were the original source of funding to be utilized to pay these expenses. However, the sixteen-seventeen negative fund balance of five hundred and eighty-two thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars reduced the twenty-seventeen eighteen ending fund balance of seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and nine dollars to two hundred and seven thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Of the two hundred and seven thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars, there was an allocation of a hundred and thirty-eight dollars, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand four hundred and two dollars to transportation. The difference of sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars was allocated to operations and maintenance. To ensure that technology stays within budget, it is necessary to transfer one hundred and twenty-two thousand from the instruction to technology. As of January twenty-nineteen, the instruction budget was forty-one point seventy-three percent spent. This categorical transfer will not have a negative impact on instruction.
Thank you. Now, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the budget amendment transfer between instruction and technology in the amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose no? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Next, we're going to move on to the purchase order for Clinton Learning, and I'd like to have Mr. Kelvin Edwards come up. We prepared, um, some extensive, um, we did some extensive research and prepared the documents, because the boards had some questions at the last meeting, and we wanted to make certain that we provide that to you. I'm sorry, the board clerk is, is mentioning something. Right. Yes.
Yes, so we wanted to put together this, um, good evening, um, Chairman Hope, um, Vice Chairman President Hall Leonard, and to the board. Um, we put together for purchase order number nineteen, that's valuable, for some additional information, and we wanted to present that additional information, um, for your review. Um, first, we talked, uh, it is from a security grant application from spring two thousand eighteen, and there was a local match required, and it included approved technology department budgets. The award for the grant was fourteen thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars, um, from the school security grant program. The Virginia schools with the program, the schools that utilized what we were trying to implement, because we were asked a question, are there any schools in Virginia that utilize this, um, technology? And the answer is Gloucester Schools and Hampton City Schools. And it's all ready to be integrated with our current audio enhancement system. And I do believe we have a picture-
Or a video.
Or a video, if the board would like to see the video. It's about, what, two minutes?
It's, yes, about two minutes only.
Can we have that, ma'am?
Yes, it's on.
Yes, so let me sit this, okay, sit this down, so, as you know, the apparatus is worn around the teacher's neck. This is what enhances, and I'll let the video do the self-explanation.
How's it going?
Teacher Gina Futch at Newton High School in Covington, Georgia, says her students are special.
Is this like the congressional election, or what?
But look closely, there's something different about her, too. You wear this around your neck. Tell me about this.
Well, this is a teardrop microphone, um, and basically it amplifies everything that I say.
The mic is designed by Jeff Anderson's company.
The audio enhancement story started with my mother trying to devise a system for my brothers to hear better in schools because they were hearing impaired.
His family has been in the educational audio business for about thirty years, but what started as a simple microphone has now developed into the same. has now developed into the safe system.
The principals, superintendents, and school board members came to us years ago and said, "Please implement a safety alert button in your microphones because it's the only thing the teachers currently are wearing to where they could alert the office."
If Miss Futch were to need assistance or feel threatened, she'd press this button and immediately that camera would snap a photo, which would be emailed to administrators and school resource officers and then this would happen in the main office.
Attention administrators, I have a silent alarm in room number 44.
The administrators and officers would come to this room and the entire time, the camera is transmitting a live signal and recording video possibly for an investigation later.
It's like 1,500 classrooms now across the country to have that.
Director of the safe system Gregory Thomas says his phone has been ringing nonstop since the Sandy Hook shooting with superintendents looking for an extra layer of security.
What would this have meant to the teachers and the students at Sandy Hook?
I would say it's too early to tell. I think at this point right now, obviously, the gunman made his way into the building at the front door and we have the ability also to simply put a padding button at the front door that does the exact same thing that the button does if the teacher presses the button.
Newton High is 20 weeks into a partial pilot program, but Principal Craig Lockhart plans to fully implement the system in every classroom next year.
Safety is important for our students. It is our number one priority and we must make sure that we have the latest advancement technology for our children. The enemies that we have are always prepared. We have to be even more prepared so that we can properly address situations and take care of our children.
And that is the video, which features the safe button that our teachers with this grant, we would install on every microphone throughout Franklin City Public Schools.
Excellent.
If you have any other questions, I would be happy to answer.
No questions, but I would like to say thank you 'cause I know I was one of those board members who had questions as to how we were spending this $27,135. So, I do applaud you Superintendent Sterling, Mr. Edwards, and your staff in doing the research and then providing this information to us. It's a system for an extra layer of security and it's also, I'm hearing, that will help our special needs students 'cause it's audio enhancement as well as a safety alert button that the teachers will be able to push and they could take a picture right there and so if later, you know, sometimes they go back and say, "Look at the camera." Well, the teachers are able to have, you know, an extra layer of safety. So, I do appreciate you providing that information for us.
Yes, ma'am.
I do have a question. I noticed that in the grant, it states that JP King was not included. Does the extra funding that is being requested, will JP King be included?
It's, there was a local match.
Right, is that part of it that will include JP King?
The local match will, yes.
Yes.
For all schools.
Okay.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Is there monthly monitoring or something that will, that needs to be paid for this service as well? Or is it a one-and-done sort of deal?
Oh, no, we renew it every year, the service.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, okay.
Yeah, but the audio enhancement is just an added on.
Okay.
It's paid for through technology.
That's correct, it's adding on to what we already have. We, our teachers already have the teardrop microphones and what we're doing is adding that layer of safety and security in light of today's things that are occurring in today's society.
And without the board members continuing to ask questions, which was an excellent question, we didn't do the research this extensively, but we, doing the research, we knew what it was for. We did the research, but we've never showed it to our administrators. So, I was glad to see that they were so attentive watching the video and I'm sure it will be an added addition to the schools. They know about it, but actually seeing it in action is something else.
Well, do we have a motion to approve purchase order 19-504?
I move to approve purchase order 19-504 to Clinton Learning in the amount of $27,135.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Any extensions? Motion carries, thank you, Ms. Edwards.
Thank you, Chairman Hope.
Thank you, sir. I guess you know how to lead.
Thank you.
Mr. Edwards will provide the federal programs, school nutrition, operations, as well as transportation report.
Thank you, Ms. Sterling. I'd like to get started with the federal programs, operational maintenance, and updates that we have and that's part of it. Thank you. I wanted to let the board know and all citizens that VPI registration is around the corner. We do have different dates. Mr. Griffin, give me that date that we said is March the 2nd and March the 20th. I'm saying, thank you. So, we will have VPI registration beginning on March the 2nd and March the 20th and we are streamlining our registration program. And what we will have is we will have our VPI teachers onboard and we will have all assessments going and we'll also have the parents complete the application while they are there, when they bring their students, so that there is no back and forth with the process. And we will collect all the information and this year for the 1920 school year coming up, we have 51 slots for VPI. We received our allotment. Our school nutrition program, we are adding our salad bar additions and we are looking so forward to that, doing another offer in our dining halls. And we were looking to start at J. Joseph King Junior Middle School and Franklin High School. Our timeline for starting, we're looking at March the 1st as we continue our process of our dining hall makeover. And as you know, what we're trying to do is offer more offers for our students to partake in and have more offered versus served. So, this will include our salad bar, our healthy meal that we offer, and our traditional service through the line. And so, right now, that will be three that we have. Our family-style dining on Valentine's Day and we have pictures at each site. We want to say that we believe that it was a success. Our students came in and when they came in, they were treated to a family-style dining on each campus. And we would like to thank Tide Water News for the coverage they gave and also to the administration and to the teachers for helping us pull off our first family-style dining. And we're looking to add more events like this in the dining halls to show our students how much we appreciate them as well as our faculty and staff. There's JP King. And that's Franklin High School. On the operations side, our roof at SP Morton, weather has set us back, but we're still performing, they're still performing the work at Franklin High School, our security door, we're still waiting on that door and we hopefully can get that door in soon. Playground materials has been delivered to SP Morton and removal of the old playground equipment has been completed and now we're just waiting for a good clear day to begin installation. All the locks on the SP Morton bathrooms have been reinstalled and fixed and we are disinfecting for germs with our hydrostatic spray. As you know, this is the influenza flu season. Transportation, we have two buses that are out there for auction. And Ms. Big, I think we got an update, is that today? Tell us that update. So, let me say that loud and proud. As you know, when we started this quest, we were looking at, we have two buses that we would put up for auction when the board approved that we could. So, originally, we were thought to only receive $300 to $500 for the buses. But through research and Ms. Sterling's diligence, we went further in our scope and we found American auctions out of Virginia Beach and we contracted with them. And so, what we're happy to say is, for the buses that we put on auction, we doubled that. And we're getting, we're auctioning one off for $1,000 and the other one off for $1,500, which far exceeds that $300 to $500 range that we first got. And that concludes our report. Thank you so much.
Thank you, good report.
Excellent, okay, thank you so much. Next, we'll have Ms. Burkehalter with Curriculum and Instruction.
Good evening, school board chair, vice chair, school board members, Ms. Sterling and community. Tonight for our curriculum and instruction updates, we have updates from each school and then professional development. At this time, we'll start with SP Morton and ask Sean Gary, the reading specialist, to come forward.
Did you wanna do the, do you wanted to skip the field trip request that the board was pulled, we can come back?
Okay, we'll come back.
Come back to that, okay, that's fine.
I'll promise him he can go first.
That's fine.
Good evening, school board members. Just wanted to share with you some of the things that we've been doing at SP Morton as we get ready for our SOL testing season. There were, have been some scheduled adjustments for us as reading specialists to support those grade levels that I have a little trouble getting to where they need to, to support the teachers, some new teachers who are not familiar, as familiar with their subject area. So, we're helping them out quite a bit. There were some staffing changes that had to be made in third and fourth grade and so our schedules reflect that, giving them the support they need so that our students can be successful. We also took an opportunity to update our pacing calendar based on the second quarter results from our benchmarks to make sure the SOLs that are on the testing blueprint were met more, recycled back into instruction, covered again to give our students a better opportunity. Also, making sure that the teachers are using their coachbooks, which are some good resources for kids to practice, working with some of the SOL things, as well as an enhanced Achieve 3000 schedule. So, we've added time in our specials in reading, excuse me, library, art, and technology. Those specialists help the children to spend more time on Achieve 3000, which will help them become, build stamina in their reading and then also experience some of the questions that they might see on the SOL. We created an action plan for third through fifth grade. Basically, it's a spreadsheet that kinda tells us where we are with how many students we need to have pass the test to get 8% this spring. And it tells us, excuse me, based on data from the testing we have, where we are, how many kids we have now and how many we need by the time we start testing. So, that's paced out for us, as well as the students that are attending 21st Century Art Tutorial in the afternoon. And that leads to the next one, which we have added additional staff to the 21st Century staff to help with tutoring our students in the evenings as well as adding students. We noticed that there were some students who weren't performing where they need to, needed some extra help, so we reached out to the parents and to them and said, "Hey, come on to 21st Century and get what you need." And so, even as of, I believe, Tuesday, when I tutored, there were kids that were already there that we had asked to come. So, that's been really, really good. We did some follow-up PD with our staff on small, gotta-read groups, how we can make sure that our students in those groups are receiving the instruction they need to move to the next level. I will say that Ms. Sterling had a colleague of hers, Dr. Loon, come and work with us and I will say that she really kinda lit a fire under myself as a reading specialist to really look at that small group. And so, I took the feedback that I got from her and worked with the teachers and had a teacher come to me today and she's like, "This kid is not moving, I don't know what to do, help me." And we sat down and talked about what he was doing, what he wasn't doing, and she's got a plan to move that student. So, very, very great to have that time with the staff. Also, Ms. Thornton was able to do some professional development with our staff on making sure that we're aligned with what's tested, what's taught, making sure that all lines up so that when we get to the SOL, that we're good to go. Ms. Thornton, all-